Yes.
Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council and Planning Commission's special joint meeting for July 31st. Can we please, if I call it order, can we please take role for both commission and council?
Hey, Planning Commission, first Commissioner Biadadi.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton. Commissioner Leffin.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
City Council, Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Medina.
Here, thank you. Public comments for items not on the agenda, I'm aware that we do have a speaker card. If there's anybody else that wishes to speak on items not on tonight's agenda, please step forward after the speaker. No?
Okay.
The speaker has chosen not to speak, so is there anybody else in the audience wanting to speak on an item not on the agenda tonight? Okay, let's move on, and I'm going to have a pledge of allegiance, I'm going to ask Mary Lou.
I'm sorry.
Did you want to speak?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Freitas.
Steve Freitas, Magnolia Avenue, I just want to commend city staff for televising this meeting tonight. It's a good step and we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We're going to move to pledge of allegiance and I'm going to ask Mary Lou Johnson if she would be so kind to lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I also want to acknowledge and thank Mary Lou, who flew back just now from a family reunion from the state of New Mexico to make sure that there was a quorum for the Planning Commission so we can conduct this joint meeting. So, thank you, Mary. Now, we're going to move on to the study session, which we're here for. Status update on Bay Hill specific plan, draft environmental impact report, and YouTube Phase One office development project. First, we're going to hear from Mr. Val Morgan.
To the Chair, I have to recuse myself because I come within the thousand-foot barrier or limit, okay?
And as well as Val, I myself am recused due to my distance of my home to the Bay Hill specific plan, so therefore I will be recused and stepping out of the meeting and it will be turned over to the Vice Mayor to take it from here, and I wish you all, but I will be in the back, in the library, watching the meeting. It is still of an interest to me, I do care, I've been keeping up to date and up to speed, it is something that is very significant for our community, so I will be here through the end of the meeting, will not return, the Vice Mayor will adjourn the meeting, but I will be here through the course of it. Thank you.
So, our item on the agenda is the study session update, as Rico said, and I'm going to turn it over to staff, please know that we will have public comment after staff's presentation.
Good afternoon, or good evening, actually. My name is Javon Grogan and I'm the city manager.
To the Vice Mayor, O'Connell, members of the City Council, members of the Planning Commission, and to the public both here and at home. Tonight, we are here to provide an update on the city's progress to develop a specific plan for the Bay Hill Office Park.
I can't hear, test.
Hello, hello, all right. Okay, we'll start from the beginning. Good evening, Javon Grogan, city manager, to Vice Mayor O'Connell, members of the council, members of the Planning Commission, and the public both here and at home. Tonight, we are here to provide an update on the city's progress to develop a specific plan for the Bay Hill Office Park and surrounding areas. As a city, we do not develop commercial office buildings, retail centers, or market-rate housing. However, with respect to development, our duty is to set economic development goals, review and act upon development proposals from private parties, and create plans and standards that guide future investment and changes to land uses within the city of San Bruno. In many ways, these three items can really be summarized in three distinct areas. One, economic development, those goals and specific strategies that we set to advance our local economy. Two, current development, and that's the work that staff do each and every day to review development proposals. And then four, what's often referred to as advanced planning, and that's really looking into the future, to proactively plan for the future that we all envision. In many ways, YouTube's interests and investment in San Bruno is a successful example of the city's prior economic development efforts to attract businesses to the city of San Bruno. The Bay Hill specific plan that we're here to provide an update on, that project is really an example of advanced planning. We are looking into the future and saying, how will this area of San Bruno develop over the next 15 to 20 years? While simultaneously, the other thing that we're talking about tonight, which is YouTube's Phase One project, that's an example of our current planning efforts, as we concurrently review YouTube's Phase One development application. And all of this work that we're here to provide the community with an update on, both the specific plan and the review of Phase One, at the end of the day, will amount to more than a $2 million effort, and that is just including the city fees alone and city consultant charges that are being 100% paid by YouTube. Tonight, we are still going to stay at the 5,000-foot level, tonight's presentation, or through tonight's presentation, rather, we are providing an update to the council, the Planning Commission, and the public on the status of the specific planning process and YouTube's anticipated phases of development, which include five phases in total, and through the presentation tonight, there'll be a number of charts and graphs that will overview that. It's also important to note that YouTube is not the sole property owner in the Bay Hill specific planning area, however, those property owners have been engaged throughout this entire project. Based on prior direction from the City Council, we are approximately two-thirds of the way through preparing all of the necessary documents and studies upon which the Planning Commission and the City Council will base their policy decisions and recommendations upon. As a result, we are not, as a result, tonight's action is an update only, and there are no agenda's formal action items on the project, the specific plan, nor the Phase One project. Tonight, I am joined by several members of the city team that are working on the project. Two of our lead consultants that I will introduce, Elaine Costello and Dan Marks. Elaine is a former Community Development Director in Mountain View in South San Francisco, and Dan Marks is a former Community Development Director in Fremont and Berkeley. Together, Elaine and Dan have been performing the day-to-day management of the specific plan in the EIR, and they are contract staff onboard with the city specific for this effort. We're also joined today by one of the, one of our special legal counsel, Ed Schaefer, from Burke William Sorenson, who has been advising the city on various aspects of the plan and the development agreement that we're currently in the process of negotiating. Also here tonight and to my right is Darcy Smith, our Community Development Director. Darcy is overseeing the staff in her department that are concurrently processing the YouTube Phase One application, and together with me, Darcy is helping to provide strategic guidance for this overall project. We do have a few other consultants that I also want to introduce, we have Heidi McPherson, that is our EIR consultant from IFC. We also have Sarah Chang from Fair &amp; Peers, our transportation consultant here, and we have Terry Bottomley from Bottomley Design and Planning, Streetscape and Land Use Consulting Services, that is providing support to the city. All of the various consultants, and that's just a subset of the ones that are here, are working at the direction of myself and Darcy, fully funded by YouTube through this effort. Lastly, and certainly not least, I want to point out that we have a number of staff members here today in the various departments that are participating in this effort, our Planning Department, our Public Works Department, our Fire Department, and representing a number of our utility, city utility departments that are helping to review aspects of the specific plan and the Phase One application. And so, the last time we were before you was December of 2018, and so without further delay, I want to turn this presentation over to Darcy Smith, our Community Development, Community and Economic Development Director, I always forget that, who will provide the bulk of tonight's presentation.
Let's make sure this is on. Yeah, testing, okay. Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor and council members and the Planning Commission. Thank you for being here tonight. So, the presentation tonight, which approximately 15 minutes, but will be the only presentation that you receive as the applicant team has, is not making a presentation tonight, just staff, but they are available to answer any questions along with the city consultants and other city staff. So, the agenda for my presentation will, first, okay, so first, we will start with the objective for tonight's meeting, then the specific plan background, and an update on that, which is again the main focus of tonight's meeting. I'll touch briefly on the development agreement, provide an update on that, spend quite a bit of time talking about the YouTube Phase One, provide an overview of that project, an update, and we'll close with the next steps. So, as the city manager, Grogan, stated, there are a number of city staff in attendance tonight, as well as the city's consultant team, and they're available to answer any questions if you have them. Oh, and I would like to emphasize the project planners here tonight, Matt Neubomber, and again, many city staff who've been working on this project since the beginning, which goes back almost three years. So, again, the objective of tonight's meeting is a study session, so we're not here seeking any council direct or Planning Commission direction, but it's to provide a status update. We were last here in December, and our goal here is to update you on the Bay Hill specific plan, the draft environmental impact report, or EIR, development agreement, and for the very first time, you are seeing the YouTube Phase One project, so again, I'll provide a lot of information about that, and we're obviously here to answer any general questions on the project of the process, progress of the project. So, for background, a specific plan is something that cities commonly prepare, as you know, we have the Transit Quarter specific plan, we have the Navy or the Crossing specific plan, so these are commonly used long-range planning tools. They also have implementation programs, and accompanying them are the environmental impact reports, which provide the analysis of the environmental effects of the project. It's really important to emphasize that this specific plan implements existing city general plan policies, those policies go back 10 years, so we're working on really implementing those guiding land use policies, and I want to point out those here, just for setting the background, those policies quote promote infill in the Bay Hill Office Park with new professional offices and hotel uses on existing surface parking lots, which is exactly what YouTube is doing, as you'll see later in their presentation. The general plan permits ancillary commercial uses in the Bay Hill Office Park, such as cafes, personal services, health clubs, small convenience, retail uses to serve the employee needs, and as you'll see tonight, the plan requires new office development to provide alternative transportation, such as shuttles, or other service that will implement transportation demand management, or TDM strategies, to reduce vehicle trips. This location is not adjacent to transit, as is our Transit Quarter Plan, but it is well, as we are a community that's very well-served by transit, as we have BART and Caltrain and major bus lines, and so this is a sort of transit-adjacent environment that can capitalize on that. So, a specific plan considers a range of topics, the primary one is land use, but when you read the staff report, I think you saw that addresses a variety of other topics, which is why we have such a robust consultant team and so many city staff from all the city's various departments working on this. Touches on many very important topics in San Bruno, such as transportation, parking requirements, streetscape design, utility requirements, infrastructure needs. So, how did we get here, just for quick background, almost three years ago, YouTube approached the city for a campus expansion request, and the city's response was, great concept, but let's work together and work with other property owners and the community and the city to develop this comprehensive plan for the future of the office park. YouTube has since made investments in additional acquisition of property within the Bay Hill Office Park, including 901 Cherry, which they recently acquired. It's important to emphasize, this is their global headquarters, they're an international company for video-serving sharing service, and they have obviously a very robust user base and international presence. So, this specific plan will guide future development, the timeline or horizon of the plan is roughly 15 to 20 years, really just accommodates additional office growth, but again, it responds to the various interests of the city, the community, other property owners, especially around transportation, infrastructure, and other needs of the city. As I mentioned, there will be an environmental impact report, or EIR, prepared under the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA. So, some key items, the city really started working on the plan in earnest about two years ago, mid-2017, we've had a number of public meetings and workshops with hundreds of participants and online surveys and a lot of robust property owner participation. The city prepared a vision statement, the guiding principles, alternatives report, again, those were all a very community-driven process. This group convened last in October, and that study session provided good consensus on very important policy options that were presented to this group, and so we proceeded using that direction. Also important, as the city manager pointed out, that in December, the preferred alternative was selected, that's the alternative that's analyzed in the draft EIR report, which I'll talk about later, and also recap that key policy direction, which we have been following. So, here we are tonight, we're at a major sort of status update here, we've done a lot of work to date on, as I mentioned, sort of the background studies and the alternatives analysis, but we're really launching into a key part of the plan where we release the draft specific plan and the draft environmental impact report. So, right now, we're in sort of a heavy analysis stage, we thought it would be great to come to you with an update, some preliminary feedback, and just update you before we launch into what will be a more aggressive period of multiple city meetings before the Planning Commission, the City Council, and we anticipate this coming back before the council in early 2020, and that would be ultimately for adoption of the specific plan and approval of the YouTube Phase One project. So, the planning area map is shown here, most people are pretty familiar with it, but it's just important to emphasize that it extends to two major freeways, Interstate 280, Interstate 380, and San Bruno Avenue West, but one important thing to point out is that based on previous council direction, we have removed the Transit Quarter Plan properties, those are in the Transit Quarter Plan, and it's atypical, it's not standard at all to have overlapping specific plan areas, so they have been removed, and those properties can be developed consistent with the Transit Quarter specific plan and under that program EIR. This provides an aerial view of the site, and you can see one, sort of one of the key features is just how contained it is within sort of a simple rectangle. Again, I mentioned, we've removed the Transit Quarter Plan sites which front El Camino and San Bruno Avenue, it's important to emphasize, those are the sites that are closest to transit, also in the city's former redevelopment area, which is, which formed the basis for the Transit Quarter Plan area, but it's really important to emphasize sort of how self-contained this is, it's sort of its own district, it has a different feel from the city as the city's sort of main and largest office park. This shows a property ownership map, as I mentioned briefly in the introduction, YouTube has recently acquired their headquarters building at 901 Cherry, which is just the main building, the old Gap headquarters, and it's important to emphasize that there's an existing development agreement in place for that property, runs through February 2021, and that does contain an existing entitlement for an office building of 287,000 square feet. So, the property owner has the right to develop that office building under that development agreement, but we, as a city, was aware of this development agreement, so this doesn't change any of the, any of the specific plan or the EIR analysis. So, with that brief overview, I'll launch into more detail about the specific plan and an update. So, as I mentioned, the council selected the preferred alternative, that's the land use map, which I'll show in a few slides, that provides the analysis for the draft EIR studies. That allows up to 2.46 million square feet of new office space, which I'll break down in a little more detail later on, and that allows YouTube and other existing property owners to expand and thrive and support Bay Hill Office Park's continued role as the city's premier office park and employment center. So, the Planning Commission and council in the future would be able to consider the range of the impacts that are studied under that EIR, any potential mitigation measures for that maximum build-out should it occur, and as you know, having approved the Transit Quarter Plan, a specific plan and an EIR can provide an umbrella of a maximum square footage or number of units, and it's, it's not necessarily all built at once, sometimes it's built over a long period of time, and again, the horizon for this is roughly 15 to 20 years. Council will have the maximum discretion ultimately to decide what, what level of office development they want to permit in the specific plan. So, some other key policy direction that the council provided was to study higher heights, up to five stories, again, those are not allowed right now under ordinance 1284, but the interest in the, that the council identified was to study those, determine the impacts, look at mitigation measures, should a ballot measure ever be placed for the voting public to decide upon. And last, as I mentioned, we've, there was council direction to remove the five properties located in the city's adopted Transit Quarter Plan, that was because the council's direction was to retain the land uses and the building heights and all the development standards in the Transit Quarter Plan, so you, it's not normal to have overlapping specific plans, so they've been removed. This is the draft EIR Preferred Alternative Land Use Plan, which is a direct result of the policy direction. I just wanted to point out a few things, there is a mixed-use overlay for the Bay Hill Shopping Center. The current general plan designates that as a commercial site, which does allow housing on that site, on the upper floors only, with special approval, so it was always envisioned going back to the 2009 general plan as a potential site for mixed-use development. This also has a housing overlay identified along San Bruno Avenue, not within the office park, but along San Bruno Avenue, and last, there's a designation for up to a 2.1 acre civic use that would also front San Bruno Avenue, because that's a rich arterial with a lot of good transit access through the bus line and shuttle service, and that's just being evaluated in the EIR, and but would be a permitted land use under the general, under the specific plan. So, other key council direction was to maintain the Bay Hill Shopping Center as a retail shopping center, it's very successful, there's a good mixture of commercial uses there, but again, following into the guiding policies of the 2009 general plan to allow for residential overlay, permitted mixed-use projects should that ever come to fruition, there was support for hotel uses and to allow an expanded hotel use east of Elm, and to allow housing by incorporating that housing overlay. Some other key features of the plan that we've been working on are to allow a transfer of development rights through properties that would not change the overall square footage allowed under the specific plan, it's studied in the EIR, but if there were certain key objectives met, such as increasing publicly accessible open space, the plan could allow for that. And in closing, there was some other key policy direction, I just wanted to point out as a reminder to set the stage for what I'll update you on for the specific plan, there was direction to keep Cherry Avenue, which you see here, open to vehicular traffic, it carries a high vehicular traffic load and really serves as a key north-south road in the city, so that will remain open. There was an interest to provide private linear parks, open space elements, and keep those accessible, and to include policies for community benefits, and to really have a great street network, and streets just aren't for vehicles, they're for pedestrians, they include bike facilities, have great street trees, so really have a great network of streets, and that's consistent with other things the city has done, such as our walk and bike plan and the city's downtown streetscape plan, so you're looking at streets as really multimodal resources to facilitate travel. So, the council provided that policy direction on studying additional higher heights, should that ever be placed on the ballot. I want to just go through the numbers that we've been analyzing in the draft EIR studies, and that with increasing the residential limits from three to five stories, you almost double the number of units that you can get, so you can go up to a maximum of 1,070 housing units with that change. Under the higher height, there was a policy direction not to change the max amount of office space, but to look at it as allowing for more open space to be built on office sites by allowing taller buildings, and for hotels, it was also looked at to allow taller hotels, up to five stories, which is similar to the city's Crossings Hotel site. So, I want to just review some of the things that we've been working on to implement this policy direction. So, one of the key features of this plan, as I mentioned, was this enhanced pedestrian environment, so when we are looking at drafting the plan, especially with the help of Terry Bottomley, who's our real streetscape expert and working with Public Works, again, implementing sort of the spirit of the walk and bike plan, but taking these, these streets and giving them much more specialized attention, we're focusing on the pedestrian, but also on the bike user, so we're looking at really nice sidewalks that are about eight feet wide, improved pedestrian street crossings, such as the mid-block crossings in key locations, and even bridges to provide the safest possible pedestrian crossing on these streets. On Grundy Lane, we're looking at doing the shared bike lane, and then Bay Hill Drive, consistent with the walk and bike plan, would have the dedicated on-street striped bike lane, but on all the streets, we're spending a lot of attention trying to create a real sense of place with high-quality lighting, high-quality, and appropriately-chosen street trees, and also stormwater facilities. Stormwater is a big thing that streets are now being redesigned to accommodate, and with the sort of new street designs, we're able to incorporate that, as the council will see when you get the green infrastructure plan, which will be coming to council soon, you'll just learn how important it is to design those facilities into the streets themselves to maximize the stormwater retention and processing. So, the EIR, as I mentioned, will provide a really detailed analysis of the office impact, so it will look at the street designs and traffic, but important to emphasize the overall program that we're analyzing, and that's 2.46 million square feet. So, how that breaks down, as I mentioned, YouTube is the largest property owner, so the majority of the office square footage here would be studied on YouTube-owned properties, up to 2.1 million square feet. There's another large property owner who we've been working closely with at 801 to 851 Traeger, and that has office capacity there, up to about 125,000 square feet. There's also some unallocated office that isn't assigned to any particular site at this time, but we're studying it, and that's about 230,000 square feet. I mentioned housing, there's been a big interest in housing and studying that as part of the EIR, and looking at those housing overlay sites, so I want to emphasize, under the base, EIR, or the preferred land use plan, and not looking at the higher heights, there's up to 572 housing units that are being studied. I want to emphasize that there's a breakdown that's distributed throughout the three specific sites. YouTube owns a site that fronts on San Bruno Avenue, and that could have up to 158 units that we're studying there. Bay Hill Shopping Center has capacity for approximately 210 units, that would be under sort of the maximum mixed-use development scenario there, and 801 to 851 Traeger, who's again, the property owner we've been engaging with very closely, we are studying up to 204 units. So, since I ran through the numbers now, I'll talk about streets in a little more detail and the open spaces. So, there was direction from council, and what we've been implementing through the plan is a variety of open space types, they would be publicly accessible, but privately-owned, and they would largely be greenways, so if you're wondering, well, what's a greenway? This graphic is our draft public realm concept, which shows the greenways, and this concept was first presented to council in mid-2017 by the YouTube team, and it's sort of this concept that's successful in many office parks, which is creating a area behind the sidewalk that's really well landscaped. behind the sidewalk that's really well landscaped and available for the public to use through, but on private property. So, that shows it here, and those are being focused on the larger, more dominant streets, so Bay Hill and Traeger and Elm. And you can see them here, but it's really important to mention that every street will have what we call an enhanced pedestrian environment. So, every street will be improved through the specific plan implementation. And a real key feature of the YouTube project that we've been working really closely with them on is creating an off-street multimodal transportation center or hub. So, for many of you who travel Cherry frequently, I think you know there's a heavy bus loading zone on Cherry. So, in an ongoing goal to ensure that there's facilities to accommodate that bus service as well as other multimodal types of transportation in addition to buses, we've worked closely with the YouTube team to design this multimodal transportation hub, which is entirely located on private property. So, the concern of the buses and the loading zones on private, on public streets would be addressed through this, and this would be built as part of the Phase One project. And it's been sited in, I think, sort of central, a central location to the office park to make it an easy walk from all the different campus buildings. So, in closing, I want to just summarize what we found to date with the EIR analysis. And again, we've been really reviewing the impacts, and it's not complete, so this is preliminary. But what we've, what we found to date is that the, with appropriate mitigation measures, which are common for EIRs, within this level of development, appears that it can be accommodated within this office park. But I want to emphasize, we will be releasing the draft EIR in the fall, and that will obviously go into all the different environmental topic areas in a lot more detail. But what's really critical in that sort of baseline finding is to know that YouTube and most other large office users, including Walmart.com, which is the other big tenant up there, they have extremely aggressive and successful transportation and management programs, and that is common with these large office users. They really invest heavily in running successful programs, not just buses, but other programs, carpool matching, bicycle parking, showers for bicycle commuters, assistance, navigating transit usage. And again, while this isn't adjacent or within a very short walking distance to Caltrain and BART, there is heavy usage there. And with the building of the multimodal transportation hub, we just think we'll be able to enhance that connectivity. This is already served by shuttles. There is a shuttle that I think stops at Cherry that serves Caltrain and BART, operated one by Samtrans and one by Caltrain. So, there is good shuttle connectivity already. So, because this is already a developed office park and already has very successful transportation and management programs, it's our initial view that it can be modernized, expanded, much like many office parks throughout the Bay Area with mitigated environmental impacts. So, in summary, we'll continue to study the impacts, and I know transportation's often the most exciting or gets the most attention. So, I just want to emphasize, we're looking at studying the transportation improvements that would be possible. I just wanted to point out a few. So, we have existing signals, such as the one at El Camino Real on San Bruno Avenue, that are operating with a high volume of traffic now. And one of the things that traffic engineers do when they're looking at adding traffic is optimizing the signal timings. So, there are adjustments that the city, or in this case, Caltrans, can make to optimize that signal timing to better carry and move the traffic flows. Could also look at the ramps to I-280 and some of those signal timings. We are looking at signaling the intersection of Traeger Avenue and San Bruno Avenue that would allow better access to Bay Hill Drive. That would not, that does not appear to be any required mitigation measure, but would be something that's just recommended as an improvement measure. So, that concludes the specific plan update. I want to just brief you quickly on the development agreement. The specific plan will include specific requirements for community benefits, and those are typically implemented through development agreements for major projects. The city has a history of entering into development agreements for our major projects. And the reason to have development agreements and community benefits in this specific location would be that the recognition that the build-out of that plan will have wide-ranging effects on the city. It will also provide the property owners with benefits that they don't currently have. So, the goal with any community benefits package is to ensure that the new development projects advance the overall quality-of-life goals of the city as a whole and accomplish sort of key benefits to the city. And so, it's important to emphasize that the city, in this case, would receive additional or improved facilities or services or related amenities. So, YouTube has requested that the city consider a request for the development agreement that would cover all five phases of their development, which I'll show you in a few slides. And it's important to emphasize that these include either direct financial contributions or other negotiated benefits, and they're above standard requirements. So, as you know, we have a new development impact fees. This project would be required to pay those. We have affordable housing impact fees. Projects here would be required to pay those, similar to any other project in the city. So, this, the development agreement and community benefits doesn't waive or reduce any of those fees. It also does not change the required EIR mitigation measures. So, these benefits are above the standard-based requirements. So, just to close, we are having regular negotiation meetings to discuss and finalize that, and we anticipate it would be presented to the Planning Commission for review and then forwarded to the City Council for ultimate decision and action. So, this is the newest information that you'll be getting throughout this presentation about the YouTube Phase One project. So, as I mentioned, throughout the specific plan process, the major driver and the funder has been YouTube. This is all a result of them approaching the city almost three years ago and saying to the city, we need to expand our campus, consistent with the general plan policies, which, again, were adopted 10 years ago, 2009. So, we are concurrently processing the Phase One application. It was submitted in April, and we're processing it actively through our city development review team. The scope of this specific phase would include the demolition of existing buildings at 1150 to 1250 Bay Hill Drive. That would, that is the future Phase Two project site, but it would provide for temporary parking during construction of this first phase. First phase is 440,000 square feet in two buildings, and they are three stories and right at 50 feet, consistent with ordinance 1284. YouTube has always stated they would comply with that ordinance in full and does not wish to change it. So, also consistent with that ordinance, all parking will be underground. So, this provides an overall phasing map. So, the first phase, sort of, we start west and work east, but with the main YouTube campuses sort of being clustered here right now, where offices have been clustered here in 901, 900, and 1,000 Cherry, the expansion will occur to the east with this being the first phase. And YouTube does occupy other buildings, such as the building here, but they're sort of trying to build in the campus and create a center, which would be mainly Phase Two, which would be the biggest site in the middle, and then expand outward. So, this map provides the phasing of anticipated occupancies, and if all progresses as planned, they would break ground early next year. So, YouTube isn't just building big office buildings. As I mentioned earlier, they're building a big off-street multimodal transportation hub that would provide the centralized location for all transit usage and other modes of transportation. They would make improvements to Grundy Lane, which the council provided direction on last year, would include straightening and realignment and a major amount of infrastructure improvements to rebuild all the utilities in that street. And that rebuilding of the street would sort of accomplish one of the main goals of the specific plan, which is to provide these greenways with enhanced pedestrian walkways and open spaces along the project frontages, as you see here. So, here's an aerial view of the project. As you can see, in the middle, there are the two office buildings, Phase One North and Phase One South. And again, the construction would then proceed mainly to the east. This provides a rendering of the building, looking west on Grundy Lane towards Cherry Avenue. And again, you can see that enhanced public realm with the bench here and the planting in the street for stormwater retention and street trees. This provides the view of the Phase One South Entry Plaza. And one really important consideration for YouTube is to provide really centralized locations in and out of the buildings for their guests and their employees, and the office campus design really strives to accomplish that. So, we've been working very closely with the city's police department to review the plans for building security. This last view is looking west on Bay Hill towards Cherry Avenue. As I mentioned previously, Bay Hill is designated to have the on-street bike facility in the city's adopted walk-and-bike plan, and you'll see that here. And this also would have that enhanced pedestrian environment. So, it's not just a bicycle-friendly environment, but it's also pedestrian-friendly environment. So, in closing, I'll quickly just review the next steps. So, you've heard a lot about the specific plan tonight and the environmental impact report. That's because we're working very hard on it, and we anticipate it will be ready in the fall. And with the draft EIR, there's a 45-day public review period, and there's also a public hearing that's required to be held on the draft EIR to obtain public comments that's held before the Planning Commission. Ultimately, the specific plan-related items will include the specific plan, the environmental impact report, the general plan amendments, and the implementing zoning code amendments. Phase One would have a number of project entitlements that would come before the Planning Commission and Council. It would include the base or standard architectural review permit, a Bay Hill specific plan development permit. That's a new permit type that would be created in the specific plan. There would be other entitlements that are pretty standard for this type of project, including a vesting tentative map and a use permit as needed. And there would be a number of reviewing and approving bodies for both of these projects in addition to the Planning Commission and the City Council. This would go before the Airport Land Use Committee and Commission, the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee, which reviews on-street changes, including loading and red striping on streets, and the Architectural Review Committee, which reviews mainly project design. And so, we anticipate completing the Planning Commission review process by the end of this year and having it before Council for Final Action and public hearings in early 2020. That concludes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and as well as our consultants are here tonight to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Darcy. Does anyone on the council or the Planning Commission have any quick questions before we open up to the public? No? No? Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, I have three speaker cards, and we're going to be using my phone as a timer tonight. When it approaches the 30-second mark, I'm going to signal with this, and I'll sit it down when the three minutes is up.
Okay. Thank you. The first speaker is Vince Elliott.
I support the plan. I am concerned about housing and lack of it, and I assume the people that will work in these additional buildings will be driving here from San Jose or Stockton. I was quite upset about the lack of housing being built in Mills Park. I thought that was very poorly handled, and we can't continue to have people driving into the city, San Bruno, to work here. So, we need to address the housing issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person? Is Aros Harmon.
I suspect you're going to hear much of the same thing. I too am very concerned about adding more commercial space without enough housing to go with it. I think in principle, we should be thinking, considering how far behind we are, where in the last decade or so, we've been creating 19 jobs for every individual housing unit. We should be, in principle, looking to reverse that trend and say that for every new job we're creating, we should be providing housing for at least two. And so, I was, I was very pleased to see the proposal to double the amount of housing from like a 500 unit to over 1,000, and I hope you all will be supporting that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Plymouth Ansbergs. I live in the Bel Air neighborhood to the east of the Caltrain. I actually work at Google. I work down in Mountain View, but part of the reason that we moved here is that it was adjacent to the YouTube campus, and I'm actually able to work out of that campus sometimes, which is awesome. And I also take the shuttle from that campus down to Mountain View. And when I do that, I bike up Bay Hill Drive to catch the shuttle up on Cherry Ave. It's actually pretty okay for biking right now. I'm really excited about the addition of bike lanes to that. I feel like that's going to make it even better. I know there are other YouTube work employees who work, who live in San Bruno. I've met some of them, and it's great. And I'm, I'm going to echo what the previous people said about, we really need more housing there. I think the idea of turning this into, you know, adding five-story housing is awesome. That would actually be in line with the current height of the crossings area, which is just across on the other side of 380 from it. I have one specific comment about the road alignment, and I don't know if this is addressed in the current plan, because it seems like maybe it didn't go into that level of detail yet. But when YouTube added the, opened the 999 Bay Hill location, which is the one I work out of most often, when I do work there, because it's close to my house, they added a shuttle stop down there, and they seem to have not really managed to figure out how to route shuttles to that. And I think their current method of doing it is to like go up to the intersection of Grundy and Elm and then like make a three-point turn, which a double-decker bus trying to make a three-point turn is kind of awkward. So, I'm hoping that in the future, the shuttle routing around the different buildings will be made a little bit smoother so that they don't have to do that kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more speaker cards? The next one is Steve Freitas.
Steve Freitas, Magnolia Avenue. I noticed that the Cherry Avenue intersection was the first one up there, but it didn't get talked about. And to me, that's the most dangerous intersection because of all the traffic and people crossing in that. The bus routes you answered, it's going to be handled through a hub, because we've got to keep them as much out of the neighborhoods as we can. And the pedestrian flyover is a great idea because we need that, because driving down Cherry right now, you stop for one person, and another one's jumping off the curb, and it gets really hectic trying to navigate that. And as the old Parks manager, I'm really concerned about the amount of landscaping. It looks beautiful, but every time we seem to add landscaping throughout the city, we don't have the staff to support maintaining the landscaping. And it's been our fight through all the years, going back to '79 when I first started, and we really have to be concerned with that. We've added so much. And are the green spaces going to be maintained by the YouTube or that to take some of the pressure off the Parks guys, because it's hard to manage? And I didn't know if there's going to be an amphitheater involved with this whole thing like they have down south, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members and commissioners. My name is Sarah Kinnahan, and I'm here on behalf of Build Up for Samatyo County's Children. This is a county-wide initiative that is tackling the shortage of childcare and preschool spaces in the county. Some of the key partners include First Five Samatyo County, the County of Samatyo, and the Silicon Valley Community Foundation. the Silicon Valley Community Foundation. And under the Build Up umbrella, I recently conducted a study looking at the need for childcare and preschool specifically in the city of San Bruno. This was funded through a grant from the San Bruno Community Foundation. And I just want to share a couple of findings that would be relevant to the long-range planning in this Bay Hill specific plan area. So overall, the city of San Bruno is short close to 400 childcare spaces for children zero to four. Approximately a quarter of that unmet need is in this, the census tract that encompasses the Bay Hill specific plan area. The census tract that includes this area also has the highest density of daytime workers in the city. And there are currently zero childcare centers in that whole census tract. Many parents would prefer to have their children close to them where they're working during the day, especially as families are commuting long distances. So just in summary, we would encourage the city to consider the childcare needs of parents who are working and living in this area in your long-range planning. And also consider how supporting childcare might be a community benefit that you want included in this neighborhood.
Thank you very much. The last speaker card is Dean Moser.
Good evening. My name is Dean Moser. I'm here representing 801-851 Trager. And I'm glad to see that the EIR is going to at least look into the height limit. At the present, it said that you were allocating 204 spaces to, for residential at Trager. We've done some studies on that. And it was our kind of plan to do residential if it was going to be allowed. And 204 spaces is uneconomic. As a matter of fact, when we, if we did 300 spaces, that would be just about break-even. And we were hoping that the height limit might increase for that property because it's right against the back of Walgreen. And if we did five stories there, then it would be economic. At the same time, it wouldn't exceed the height of Walmart as it is right now. So we'd like the EIR, I'd like to suggest that they study in the EIR the height limit for that and allocating more residential to the 801-851 Trager property. Thank you.
Thank you. And there's no more speaker cards? Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak that did not do a speaker card? It's your last chance. Got very quiet.
I'm Kathy Heckman. Can you hear me? I'm Kathy Heckman. I've lived in San Bruno for several decades. I'm going to respond to the gentleman wanting to increase the height limit. And I am going to request that not occur. If anything, I prefer to see the height limits stay the way they are or lower, or we're going to run into the same problem we're having with the Mills Park project that we're running into a problem with. If you want to completely urbanize San Bruno, then go for it. But you still have a suburban community here. And to start putting in taller buildings in this area, you're going to, eventually, the whole area will be like that. And if you want to drive out the suburban residents that live here, then go for it. But to say that you can't build this and make money off of it, I disagree with you. And I disagree with any increase in height in any of these corridors, plans, anything you want to call it. But I disagree with these heights that you're wanting to put in of 70-plus feet. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And anyone else? Last chance. I just want to make a comment about the height limits. We have an ordinance 1284 that limits the height in that specific area. So any height increase would have to go to the vote of the people. The City Council cannot impose it.
I understand that. I'm going to let you hear me. I understand that. And I think it's for a different time to have that discussion, but I'll get to the turn when I start considering whether to wind up here or something like that. Thank you.
Okay. So, back to staff. There was a couple of questions. I know YouTube representatives here, I'm sure they heard the comment about the big buses trying to make the three-point turn, and I'm sure they're going to fix that. We talked about, somebody asked about the landscaping. And do we have an answer about who would be responsible for that?
Darcy Smith, Community Director? This is not working. Oh, okay. It is. Thanks. So obviously, YouTube, like any other private property owner, would maintain all the landscaping on their private property. We are, no, I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Okay. So YouTube, like any other private property owner in the city, would be responsible for maintaining the landscaping on their private property, which I showed you sort of the Greenways concept. That's mainly on private property. The median, such as the Bay Hill median, currently is maintained by the city. But we are having discussions about the portions of the medians and portions of the right-of-way being maintained by private property owners.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And I believe there was, oh, I'm sorry.
Just about the shuttle stop, that question. There was a request recently that went to the TSPC committee for a new shuttle stop on Elm to address the issue that's being raised. And through that, YouTube and I believe other property owners asked for additional shuttle stops. And that's working its way through the city's process, disconnected from the specific plan because we know that those are issues. And the committee is, I think, reviewed that at their last meeting.
Thank you very much. That's all the questions I remember. Was there anything else that staff picked up that I did not?
There was a question about daycare. So I guess right now, yes.
Hello? Can you hear me? Okay. There was a question about daycare. Currently, to a site of daycare in the area has to go through a discretionary process. Through the specific plan, we are looking at allowing daycares as a allowed use. I do think that it's also worth noting that with the purchase of the El Cristo school site from the San Bruno Park School District, Stratford Schools has purchased that property. And they are currently submitting a plan to add a preschool and kindergarten there for up to 312 students. And so it is absolutely right. There have been studies that shows the deficit that San Bruno has for preschool. Part of that will be met by the Stratford School. And we are planning on changing the zoning here or recommending the change of the zoning for daycare to be in allowed use. The other question was about the intersection of Cherry and San Bruno. There is an existing project that the City Council funded in the 1920 budget. And we are designing pedestrian safety improvements for that intersection protected lefts that is ongoing right now in advance of the specific plan. And this intersection is also being looked at through the EIR.
Okay. Thank you very much. So it's back, I'm sorry, sir. If you have... There was a question about amphitheater. I believe that's part of the community site.
Well, there is no plan for a amphitheater. When we met with the City Council, there was actually direction to move away from having a municipal park-type structure within the office park. And so there is no plan for an amphitheater. I didn't hear that question. I'm sorry if I missed it.
Okay. There is some space being looked at for community use. And I, maybe that is where that came from. Okay. Back to Council and the Planning Commission. Are there any questions from the Planning Commission? Okay. City Council? Oh, I'm sorry.
There's questions.
I do, I do. I have a little list going here. Is this a time to do a list or are we doing preliminary questions? These are preliminary questions. If they're not appropriate, the staff will let you know.
Oh, well, let's see. What, this is kind of a general question that I had was, I know at the last meeting there had been discussion about aligning Bay Hill with Euclid Avenue. And I noticed that it has not been changed. And I was wondering if that was intentional and what the reasoning was behind that.
I'm sorry, I missed the first part.
At our previous meeting, I know there'd been discussion about aligning Bay Hill Drive with Euclid Avenue, which is on the other side of El Camino, to make a better thoroughfare for the bike and pedestrian. I don't know if that was intentionally not addressed, but I did want to ask about that.
Okay. That was brought up by a citizen, a resident?
Oh, okay.
And I don't know if staff looked at it, but I looked at it very closely. There is only maybe a 10-foot offset from Euclid to Bay Hill. And to move, to line anything, you'd have to take out those eucalyptus trees. You'd have to move chilies over. And so since it's only a 10-foot difference between it, it did not seem feasible to do.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Did you have more questions?
I do, but I think there may be a better time for me to ask them later.
Okay.
Through the chair. I just, I had a point of clarification. The height limitation that is now being explored, was that at the request of staff or at the direction of the existing City Council?
So two-part answers to that. One, it was a direction at the City Council from the meeting in December. But I would not say that additional heights is being explored. The direction was, we are in the middle of doing a EIR that would guide development over the next 15 to 20 years on the project. In doing that, in order to have to not do that EIR, should an effort ever be put before the voters to increase heights, just to make sure that we do, we are doing a comprehensive EIR so that does not have to be changed should an effort to put that on the ballot ever occur. So there is no current proposal for a ballot measure to be put before the City Council. All of the, no direction nor any work to do that has been done. The only thing we are doing is ensuring that the EIR captures that environmental analysis should that ever be done.
Also, I wanted to ask if on the, I guess on the preliminary schematics that we saw today, it appears that on, there's a lot of attention being paid to the Cherry side. Are there going to be any, is there going to be any investment in bike lanes or pedestrian walkways on the El Camino side, especially going into the thoroughfare of our downtown?
The El Camino side is within the transit corridors plan, which is not within the Bay Hill specific planning area.
In the, on slide 14, it looks like this is, this blue line on El Camino Real. So you're saying that the buildings in front of that fall within the transit corridor plan, abetting El Camino Real and San Bruno Avenue? Is that right?
Yes. So that L shape along El Camino Ave and up to Elm on San Bruno Ave is within the transit corridors plan that has, that was adopted by the City Council in 2013. And those increased heights and densities were adopted by voters. 68.2% of voters adopted those in 2014.
Okay. Excuse me, just a second. Darcy, could you pull up the map, any one of the specific plan maps?
Slide 14.
That, oops. Too fast.
Hold on.
14.
Yeah, that one.
Thank you. I think that'll help.
So then because it's not in the transit corridor plan, does that relieve the owners in the Bay Hill from any responsibility on the El Camino-San Bruno side? On that corner or facing El Camino Real?
Yes, because it's not within the plan area. What I would also say is, it is a part of the city's overall multimodal pedestrian and bike plans to increase pedestrian and bike connections to, along El Camino, down San Bruno Ave, to the Caltrain Station and to BART. Overall, should this effort be approved, that does help with that. Because frankly, what we need is economic development and additional resources to accomplish our entire plan for bike and pedestrian management.
My other question is just reflecting off of Mr. Freitas. The amphitheater was along with the library. So when the PG&E public meetings were happening, the aquatic center, the community space, soccer fields, the library were amongst the most talked about in all the public meetings that I attended. And so the amphitheater came up. That was an idea that I believe was brought up by the leadership of the past here, well, part of the leadership of the City Council too, but at the public meeting that I attended at the very beginning. And so there was a lot of popularity around this idea of an amphitheater in the middle of the business plan. So it's, I know that it's not a foreign concept. It didn't come just from one person. I mean, this was talked about at one of the public meetings that I attended. So I was just wondering, what is the, what is, is there any plan? Are we looking at a library instead? What is the community benefit portion looking like? Because I know these were thoroughly discussed at the public meeting.
So a number of items may make up the eventual community benefit package that comes before the Planning Commission and then the City Council in the fall of 2019 and in 2020. Specific to the amphitheater, as the Community Development Director mentioned, there is a 2.1-acre parcel that is being looked at within the Bay Hill Office Park area on San Bruno Ave between Elm and Trager, is that Trager? Between Elm and Trager. What that site would be used for is undesignedated. It is just termed as a civic use. But what was also talked about is having that as an option, but potentially a civic use elsewhere in the community. And all of those are a part of the Development Agreement, Community Benefit conversations that are ongoing between the city's negotiation team and the property owner.
I have a lot of questions, so I don't know if somebody else wants to ask their questions.
I can keep going if you want to break. Oh, there was mention in the report of a public, a little loud, a public, publicly-accessed kind of plaza, open space at the corner of Grundy Lane and Cherry Avenue. And I was wondering if that was, I was just considering its location and whether or not that would be an actual pleasant place for the public to meet over there. It's kind of close to 380, and I imagine it'll be a little bit noisy. I didn't know if that was a site that was specifically chosen or it was more of a whole, kind of a, something to be a holding place for the EIR. I was just concerned about its location.
So you're referring to the existing sort of open space area on Cherry and Grundy? Here?
Yes, that one.
Yeah. So that space there. So that is an existing area that's pretty flat. There's actually not a lot of space up here where you actually have a level spot. It also provides a great connection over to Commodore Park. So this is an office park. There's not areas that you can carve out easily. So the design team thought that's existing. It's on a good pedestrian street, connects to other places where pedestrians come and go, such as the shopping center. Frankly, a lot of the pedestrian volume in the area now, if you're not going to a bus or other, or a shuttle stop, it's to Bay Hill Shopping Center. And so the location is really geared towards Cherry and providing sort of that nice connectivity to the Commodore Park.
I see. If I'm not mistaken, right now, is that kind of a screened-in area that looks almost like a little cafe?
So part of it is, yes. Part of it isn't. So if you go out there, you'll see that there's some seating areas. It's not entirely level now, so we need to be kind of regraded. And there's some trees that aren't, aren't in, aren't ideal for the location. But as... But as part of a redesign, it could be quite a pleasant area. And typically, these plazas are sited on corners. I realize you think there's a lot of traffic, but frankly, if you have a cup of coffee and you're having a conversation, it's, it's kind of an ideal space to sit, and the ambient traffic noise isn't excessive.
I, I recognize it, it being convenient, because it's already there and wouldn't, you know, require a whole lot of thinking. And obviously, space is at a premium. And I, I also acknowledge this is a business park, and it's not like, we're not building a new park for the city, although there'll be city benefit. But, in my personal opinion, I don't think this would be the most ideal or pleasant place to sit. But if we have to squeak it in, I understand why it's there. My personal opinion. Oh. I understand we're going to be using a parking ratio of three spaces per every 1,000 office square feet. And I was just wondering how that compares to other campuses? What, just by comparison, what do other campuses do? And where, where did that ratio come from?
Is your question, other campuses in the Bay Area or other campuses in the city of San Bruno?
I'd like to start with the city of San Bruno.
Okay, so it's roughly similar to other campuses in the city of San Bruno. We have traditionally approved office campuses through a planned development permit, which means the parking requirements are set for the project itself through the planned development. So, you might have plus or minus range of 10%, 20%. A lot of these were built in different eras, but roughly three per thousand. And that is consistent with the direction provided by the city council at their study session in January. And we talked about the transit quarter plan parking standards. The direction was to use the city standards and reduce them by approximately 10%. And that gets you three per thousand, and to allow also mechanical parking, valet parking, tandem parking.
Great, okay, thank you. I just was looking for reference, you know, context. Oh, this is kind of a clarification. Would the housing created on-site be for employees only, or would it be open to the public?
So, if housing is developed in the overlay, it would likely be a private project. The city does not own any of, any of the parcels. So it would be the property owner either by themselves or partnering with a private market developer. And we at this time do not know how those relationships would be structured. It is possible that it, a non, a YouTube or a non YouTube property owner can develop housing and have it available to the open market. It is also possible that there could be a partnership where some employee-related housing is purchased. But essentially, they would be private-funded projects. The city does have a affordable housing requirement. It is probably also worth noting, even though it wasn't your specific question, that the project would pay the office projects, any housing projects would have to comply with the city's 15% affordable housing requirement. And any commercial projects would have to pay the city's affordable housing linkage fee, which right now is $12.50 per square foot and will be indexed. And so at the full potential build-out at two point, at a little over 2.4 million, over the build-out, that's over $30 million in affordable housing fees that would be paid to the city that then could be invested in the community. YouTube's portion of that, I think we have estimated that at 24 million of the, of the 430, paid over the course of the build-out.
Great, you read my mind, thank you. And my last question was, I know that stormwater had been mentioned as one of, one of the challenges, a feasibility challenge. And I was wondering if, if you may have just a short discussion about the different methods that might work specific to the site for either, for keeping the stormwater on-site or for being transferred.
Yeah, we're going to turn that to Heywon Ritchie, the city's engineer.
I apologize, if you could please repeat the question, I was momentarily distracted.
Sure, sure. And I just, I know that stormwater is, is going to be a challenge for this project. And I was wondering what, what methods are being looked at for keeping that stormwater on-site or channeling it to the right place?
I believe there has been a commitment by YouTube to detaining and not having net increase of stormwater that's already leaving the site. There will be buyer retention areas that are being proposed along the street frontage for additional green infrastructure. However, I think specifics have not been provided at this time as to what those facilities are.
Okay, thank you. That's all for me.
Thank you, Kelly. Do you have more?
Yeah, through the chair. So, well, I'm just curious why the, all the housing is on San Bruno Avenue?
I'm sorry, Linda, could you repeat it?
Yeah, I'm curious, this is a question for staff. Why all the housing, if there is going to be a housing overlay, it's all on one side, it's on San Bruno Avenue, as opposed to being mixed into the larger business plan? I know that at the public, the initial public meeting, there was talk about, I'm comparing this to South Park in San Francisco, was what this was compared to, where there's, it's kind of in the center of an urban area, but there's still housing with retail downstairs.
Through the chair, please.
And businesses around. Yes.
Me too, I guess I have to get closer to the mic, it's really hard to hear, because you're looking that way and the mic's in front. So if you could move that mic, that would be great, just so I can hear what you're saying.
I will get closer to the mic.
Got it.
So this question is for staff. I'm curious to know why all the housing overlays on San Bruno Avenue, as opposed to being mixed throughout the business center? And the reason I bring this up now is because at the initial meeting with the public, there was a comparison to South Park in San Francisco, where there's housing, there's retail downstairs. You know, AT&amp;T Park is, I think, a block away, and it's mixed with business in that area. So with the need for housing, I'm just curious to know why, why can't we meet that need but mix it throughout the business area?
Sure. So, Planning Commissioner Chair Mason, part of your question was, why is all the housing overlay centered on San Bruno Ave? That is not true. Part of the housing overlay also affronts Cherry Avenue with the Bay Hill Office Park. It is that way because that is where council directed it to be. There is also the possibility of housing in the office park area that is within the transit corridors plan area, and that's that L shape boarding El Camino Real and San Bruno Ave. It should also be noted that this community, through the transit corridors plan and the Measure N, cited new housing development to be focused in the transit corridors plan, increased densities and increased heights to focus additional housing in the transit corridors plan. And so that has been the city's interest to pursue housing in those areas and partner with developers that are willing to work with the city. And in addition, I will, what was also talked about at various community sessions and at the city council is this, this is, Bay Hill Office Park is our only substantial office park within the city. And so one of the mantras that was certainly talked about by members of the community was let an office park be an office park. And that's what this is, that's what major property owners have invested in it for. And to follow the, the plan that was outlined by nearly 70% of the voters of the city to build additional housing in the transit corridors plan area.
I also would like to remind everyone that part of this is also looking at housing over the Bay Hill shopping areas as well. So that would be retail on the bottom and housing above. So they're looking at all aspects of housing in that area.
Yeah, and, and the reason I, I'm asking is because it appears that all of the traffic and all of the pressure is going to be hitting San Bruno Avenue.
I think part of the other answer to that is the 2009 citywide general plan that had robust community engagement and input designated Bay Hill as an office park. And so this is again, keeping with that vision. And, and as you know, these are multi-year, multi-decade plans that we work to implement.
Through the chair, just to insert another idea is, and this is just off the top of my head, is that by bringing the housing towards the edges of the community, the existing community, it, it may be a nice way of inviting that new housing and the residents in that new housing as part of, of our greater community, rather than kind of tucking them and hiding them away in the business park. But that's just what occurred to me.
And I'm glad the city manager brought up the 2009 general plan. Because it's, one of my questions is, the general plan had originally asked for, in, in Luffy, that was going to go to open space or park space, I believe. So since that is no longer, that's been voted out this year with the initiation of impact fees, what's the obligation for open space? Is it, is it a large community benefits package? Is there a separate request being put into YouTube or the existing spaces to provide more open space or park space?
Sure. So the section you're referring to in the city's 2009 general plan was actually not for office, it was for housing?
It was for housing, correct.
And so for housing, talk up and talk louder. We need new microphones, we will try and find money to, to buy those. The 2009 general plan called for, in Luffy, for housing, not office. So in the housing overlay areas, if housing is developed, that, that in Luffy has been replaced, as you know, with a more robust and comprehensive development impact fee structure that, that applies. And so, development impact fees will be paid for any residential or any office development in this area. And one of the directions, and this was talked about extensively through the various EIR alternatives that were put before the community, I guess through most of 2018, but sort of culminated in mid-2018 with the selection of the preferred ERR alternative that we're studying, which did not include a park within, a, a new municipal park with, within this office park. But certainly, contributions to citywide parks and open space were discussed by members of the planning commission and members of the city council. One of them that certainly comes to mind, and I'm sort of remembering that conversation vividly from our October and December meeting, was about Commodore Park, Commodore Park, Commodore Park. And so that is certainly being talked about through our development agreement and community benefit negotiations that are ongoing.
Some, I guess my concern is that we're building more housing, so more people are coming in, but we, we've taken away the, I guess, the incentive or the requirement in some ways for open space. But more importantly is that we're losing spaces that are coming up for sale. So we lost the opportunity for El Cristal, never get that back again. San Bruno Park will not be expanded again in that way. Crestmore Fields is just designated surplus a couple of weeks ago. So I'm just wondering, what is, what will be the plan to offset the new development in the specific plan with the additional housing units to ensure that we're still preserving some of our parks and open spaces?
Sure. Respectfully, Planning Commissioner Chair Mason, I would disagree with the characterization that we no longer have fees to cover open space. When we took away the open speed, open space in Luffy, it was replaced by a comprehensive set of development impact fees. One of the areas that is a part of that calculation is parks and open space. And so, I, I disagree that we have taken that away. I think we've actually, and through the impact fees, we significantly stepped up what new development would contribute to this city, not only in the areas of parks and open space, but also for their fair share of utilities and services and roads and, and things of that nature. And that was a large part of our development impact fee conversations, were, wow, are we increasing fees so much to push away new development? And we specifically set the fees higher than they were, but not at a level that would push away new development. And we really want it to be consistent with what surrounding municipalities were charging. So it wasn't cheaper to do business in San Bruno, but also not more expensive to do business in San Bruno. And so, I, I do think that we have covered that through our development impact fees. And again, those are paid for office and housing.
And so, will there, is there a plan in place, or will there be a plan to continue to acquire space for the new residents that are planning to move here, new employees that are coming?
Fair. So, what I would say is that that's not an agendaized item for us to talk about tonight. And I see that our city attorney nodding, our larger plans to acquire space. What I would say is critical to that is that we work toward a little bit of what we're doing tonight, which is our advanced planning and current planning, so we can approve projects that will pay fees, so we'll have the money to invest in, in new open space. As of right now, I believe our Park in Lou fund is essentially depleted in the city of San Bruno. And I'm looking at our finance director who's nodding his head. The last significant amounts of those fees were used to purchase and fund the Florida Park project, the city's latest acquisition. The two newest parks within the city of San Bruno are the Earl Glenview Park in the Crestmore neighborhood that recently we celebrated the substantial completion and opening that park in October of 2018. And we are continuing to work to build Florida Park, which I think is just about an acre park. Again, funded with essentially all of the balance that we had in our Park, Park, Park Fee Fund. And so, you know, working at economic development, so we'll have development that pay into those fees, so we can acquire projects is extremely important and part of why we're here tonight.
So fair enough, so then we'll go back to, so slide 38. The two squares that are open, it looks like open space, some kind of open space. I'm just curious to know if that is right there. So there's these two spaces that appear to be somewhat white, yeah, with people walking, yeah, right there. And then the other space, it looks, am I wrong, are those fences around them?
So, yeah, this is an aerial shot, and so what you see is a little deceiving. Those are actually structures that are within the building. Those are second-floor courtyards within the YouTube Phase 1, so Phase 1 North and Phase 1 South. These are second-floor courtyards with a, a pedestrian bridge connecting the two buildings. And so it is open space, but it is private open space on the second floor of the Phase 1 YouTube building.
And so just to be clear, the private open space means it's not open to the public? Correct, is that right?
In this case, no, it is on the second floor, a part of the employee secured area from YouTube, allowing open space once employees pass the secured area, and allowing them to connect to the north and south buildings without re-entering the enhanced security protocols that YouTube has put in place.
Okay, great. And then on slide 39, the next slide, is that, is that a skywalk?
That is what you saw before. So that is this pedestrian bridge connecting the two properties spanning Grundy. And so that, right there, is the same second-floor elevation, sort of also captured here. This is on the north side of Grundy, spanning across, that, that's the courtyard on, on private property, but kind of going here, that is that pedestrian bridge spanning across Grundy, second floor.
Is that a possibility to go on over Cherry, now that they've purchased?
Not, is that a possibility to go over Cherry?
Yeah.
I do not believe that that has been talked about at this point.
Okay. For slide 43, well, I can, I can just ask the question. Items for review and approval, the specific plan, the EIR, the general plan amendments and the zoning code amendments, are those all part of the 45 days that were mentioned in the staff report?
No, just the EIR is the 45-day review.
What would be the process for the others?
So, hi, Darcy Smith again. The process for those would be that they would be released the same time as the draft environmental impact report. Under state law, there's a 45-day public review period for that, which is really just a deadline to receive public comments, so that the responses to those comments can be prepared, which usually requires sometimes more analysis, and then published. be prepared, which usually requires sometimes more analysis, and then published. That's called the final EIR, which is a little deceiving, because I have a draft EIR and then a final EIR, but they're actually two separate documents. And then that final EIR, responses to comments, is presented to the decision makers. So all of the items, including like the general plan amendment, the implementing zoning code amendments, that would be distributed with the specific plan and the EIR. And we anticipate releasing those in the fall with, again, at this point, probably up to six more public meetings.
Oh, great. Okay. Go ahead.
Are you finished?
I'm not, but someone else can go.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
I'm not finished, but somebody else can ask questions. Maybe they might ask some of the same questions I have, so.
Through the chair, I'm happy to ask one. Some have already been asked. At the October 30th, 2018 meeting, there was a discussion on open space. And I just want to be sure that I'm clearly either voicing my thought on this or understanding it. Some of the creative thinking that came from the audience was that open space, they were suggesting that maybe open space could be meandering through the Bay Hill, through the YouTube project, and possibly having a social component in there. And I voiced at that time, and I feel, I still feel the same, same thing, and I wanted to just reiterate my thought here, is that I believe that for safety, for safety purposes, that there's opportunity to drive on some of those streets. But I think that to be able to walk through the private property, I feel strongly that unless YouTube really wants that to happen, or other businesses within there, they really want that to happen, I'm from the opinion that it's really from the safety factor, that open space and having public walk through areas of the building, you just open it up for unsafe conditions, night, people whom we want to loiter and do other types of activities in the area. And also just based on what we've experienced with the unfortunate situation at YouTube, I just think that that's a key factor, that just because they're coming, YouTube has come, not coming in, but has come into our community, that they're extremely willing to be partners with us in the city in various ways. And I believe that this is, would be an undue burden to that, to YouTube and any other business. And also, it would, I think it's a huge responsibility to take on that is not theirs to have. So open space, we've talked about it in a variety of different ways, but I really wanted to speak to the fact that in this situation, that the open space for that particular business belongs to them. And I, and I wanted just to voice that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any particular questions for staff?
I don't have questions. I think many of them have been answered along the way, so thank you.
Rich, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but I would like to thank staff for the efforts they've put into this so far. This has been a long and arduous process, and there's been a ton of work put into this that doesn't show in just one meeting. It's been hours and hours and weeks and days and months worth of work. So thank you all for your efforts. It's much appreciated.
Thank you. So?
Through the chair?
Medina?
Yes, thank you very much. I wanted to follow up with the linear park, open space question. I'm looking on page 21. And then when you go to page 26, it's publicly, publicly accessible, privately owned, open space and private linear park open space. So if somebody could kind of touch on, are those definitely different things, or what are those?
So the, there's a lot of terms used kind of interchangeably here, so I apologize, but this shows the concept the best. It's a, and it's in the map format. So the greenways or the linear open space is what you see, the green portions kind of hugging the streets, Bay Hill, Traeger, and Elm. Those are on the major streets where we anticipate sort of a wider street, you know, more lanes, the bike lanes, for example, on Bay Hill, where you want this nice landscaped greenway. So those are the greenways. That's the concept that YouTube developed and presented to the council, I think, mid-2017, and the council supported it, and the council selected as part of the EIR Preferred Alternative Land Use Plan. The plaza is a different thing, which is the open space area that, the main one here is the little rectangle at Cherry and Grundy that you'll see there. And that, again, is more of like a flat area that's paved, it's passive, it would have benches. And in all of these concepts, we're having discussions about public access and what that means. Again, they're balanced with significant security concerns. So we're working very closely with our chief of police, our security. Concerns are just real here, and so we're really working to ensure that those concerns are addressed. But I think the comment was captured correctly by Commissioner Johnson, which is that, you know, we're really looking at partnerships, but also looking at making private property, private property, and looking at public access where it's really meaningful and valued by the community.
I appreciate that clarification. I just was a little confused by the two terms and at two different pages. So I'm satisfied, and I agree that having a landscaped area is nicer than having concrete all over the place. So it looks like with the greenways that that'll be accomplished. So that was my clarifying question. If I can continue?
Absolutely.
So just kind of the status of where YouTube, YouTube's expansion plans are, I'm interested in just understanding what their employee growth is over the last few years, and in the next few years, what is it anticipated to be? It's been a while since we heard what those numbers were, and I'd just be interested in hearing that. I had a question about on page 24 of this total unallocated office program of 229,000 square feet. I'd just like to see where that is on the figure, so maybe if I pause now, if you can show me where that space is.
Hi, my name is Elaine Costello. I'm from Management Partners, and I've been the project manager on the specific plan and for the city. One of them, Dan, my colleague, has also been working with me. We allocated the square footage that the council gave a preferred alternative with a certain amount of square footage of 2.46. And most of that, as was stated earlier by Ms. Smith, works out, and, but there was one area where we recommended, where we, in the draft, as we're working on this, we're recommending that that square footage be reduced, and that's that vacant parcel at the end of Bay Hill.
Got it.
And that leaves some additional square footage, which we put on the table as unallocated. We are currently, as part of the development of the specific plan, looking at ways that that could be allocated potentially to the hotel for expansion or some other way. So it is literally not allocated to any geographic area at this point. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And so basically, from the staff report for the property that was the former Gap building, that the, that the recommendation is to reduce the allocated space there and put it somewhere else.
Put it somewhere else, and we have not yet determined where that is, which is why it shows up as unallocated in the table.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to clarify that, because it was a little confusing. That's a lot of space.
It is a little confusing, and we are still working on things, so we didn't want to get ahead of ourselves. But we will be bringing an answer to that when we bring the specific plan forward.
Got it. Thank you. Since we're talking about 901 Cherry, that's the former Gap building, right? And now considered the YouTube headquarters? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So currently, there's a development agreement with that property that I thought I heard expires in 2023?
No, February 2021.
February 2021.
Yeah, so soon.
So basically, if nothing gets amended and nothing gets built there, then that'll expire, and what happens?
Yeah, it will expire.
Okay. So currently, no, there are no development impact fees or affordable housing fee linkages to that, because it's part of a previous development agreement?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just guessing then that some new development agreement will take place and cover that.
Not at this point. So I think part of the answer to your question is, when we implemented the new impact fees, they were prospective, not retroactive, and we have a number of projects. This is one that had an improved plan many years before, and they vested to the fee schedule that was in place there. And so if the, an application comes in for that project, it would be built under the existing entitlement. If it expires, they would, there'd be a reaplication or another process.
And we have no timeline for something like that to get done in two years, less than two years?
So just to emphasize, the development agreement also included approval of an office building and associated parking garages. So that approval is a vested entitlement, and the owner has the right to develop that as approved under the development agreement.
Okay.
So I think at this point, you can assume it's a, it's an entitlement that exists that may be exercised.
And if it expires, then it's just?
Then it's just, and new process should that?
It just remains vacant in the back and?
Correct. And then they would go through a similar process, such as Phase 1, to go through an entitlement?
Right, and this EIR does have, doesn't include that, because that's already developed, that's already approved?
No, it does include an analysis of this site, because it's within the specific plan area.
Okay.
So, again, the EIR and the specific plan will look forward up to 20 years, so it counters both situations. The development, property owner has the right to develop that site in accordance with the development agreement that is in effect right now through February 2021. Should that date end, something could feasibly be developed under this specific plan in the program EIR.
Okay. This is a big update from what we received when we first heard about that parcel being, having a development agreement. So this is the first time I've heard of it, right? This is the first time it's been reported out. So it's, that's why I got so many questions about it. So I'm satisfied with the answers. Thank you. Traffic. So looking at page, page 29, understandably, YouTube does have shuttles. Walmart.com has a shuttle that gets employees from Caltrain and BART to those office buildings. How successful, what does aggressive and successful mean? How, how many employees are actually using it? Just curious, because it's good to understand what?
Right. This is, of course, a summary of some preliminary work that's been going on in the EIR relative to transportation, but we do have information from YouTube that more than 50% of their employees, and all of this will be documented in detail in the EIR. Sarah Chan from Farr and Pierce is here. And we have been gathering all of this information about exactly what's gone on historically at YouTube. And they have got, from what we've seen, they have a very successful TDM program between their buses and their carpooling and their other efforts. They have been able to do pretty, very impressive work in reducing the number of employees who arrive in their own individual automobile. And we will, we do have that documentation, and we will have all those numbers. I know it's more than 50%. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me right now, and I dare not give you wrong numbers, because I wouldn't want to do that. But we will have all of that documentation.
Right. And that's really important, I think, for everybody to understand, that as you're concerned about traffic, that if you're having these shuttles, it's going to reduce the traffic. So currently, how often do the shuttles operate?
You know, that is, you know, by the time we get you the EIR, we will have that kind of information. I think that's, we're really kind of jumping the gun. We wanted to give a sense, big picture, in this staff report of kind of where we were headed, but all the detail, we're really not ready to go into that tonight.
Okay, no, that's fine. Just that, I think it's important for the public to understand that YouTube does have these shuttles, and sometimes they do cause a little bit of a problem, at which we heard about the three-point turns, which is getting resolved by going to the TSPC. So I'm a big believer in shuttles. I think, I think they could greatly reduce the, the traffic that we're going to witness through, from Caltrain, as people trying to get that last mile and getting people to work safely. My next question is about height limits, and currently, we're looking at up to five stories. There are buildings in the business park that are higher than that. Is there a reason why we would limit ourselves to five stories? And before we answer that, I wanted to kind of take a moment to talk to, or to address a comment from the public in that we do need housing. If we put housing in taller buildings in an appropriate location, we don't need to put that housing in other areas that are not as appropriate, all right? So there is enough of a buffer, in my opinion, to, to have the higher buildings in, in the interior of the business park, which won't be as impactful to the areas that are next to the residential areas. So I recall that the council at that December time did talk about it, and, and as our vice mayor said, the final decision is within the public's hands. So this is an opportunity for in the EIR, for that, it to be at least studied, and then it will be up to the public to decide if, if it's going to be allowed. So if we could, if I can get an answer, what, is it, is it just five, or is it maybe could be higher for the business side? Or if we can look at making these numbers up in housing and having it in an area where there's going to be a shuttle system, and let's say those employees that work in that business park, if they're living right across the street, and I don't know who really wants to live across the street from work, you know, but some, some may want to, that traffic is gone. So we need to meet these regional housing numbers, and the place to put a higher housing is in this business park. So I'll stop for now and?
Sure. Two questions there. What is the existing height of the Walmart.com building that I believe was built when it was federal property? So the height is 90 feet. We don't have the exact stories. I believe it's seven, it may, may look like eight with, with the shroud on top, but 90 feet is the height. Why was the, your other question was, why are the heights that are being studied in the EIR, five stories or 70 feet? And that is because the city council conversations on December 4th, or whenever that December meeting was, was about aligning the, potentially studying, aligning the Bay Hill Office Park area to the transit corridors plan. And there was talk about the fact that, that area in the transit corridors plan is zoned for 70 feet, five stories, and, and aligning that. And so that's why the draft EIR is studying that alignment with the TCP.
Right. Understood. However, as, as we're realizing now, that if we were to have a, have some extension of that overlay beyond just the TCP, which is along San Bruno Avenue, that we would be able to achieve a higher number of housing that we, we know that we need. And my, I guess my question, as we, as we come to discuss it with my colleagues here, is, are we willing to look at allowing that overlay to extend deeper into the Bay Hill Park? Maybe not, I'm not saying, I'm not advocating to go all the way across, I just, just saying to make sure that we can cover and maybe achieve some more housing within, within the business park.
So Councilmember Medina, the best response I would have is that we are here tonight providing an update. There are no agendized action items or additional direction. This, this will amount to more than a $2 million effort that we're essentially two-thirds of the way through. And there was a robust, a robust process. of the way through. And there was a robust, a robust process to, with community engagement to decide on the preferred alternative. And then a process where the city council gave staff specific parameters to, to go and proceed with this specific plan under. I think the concept that you're articulating, which is potentially additional height, is a reopening of portions of the EIR that again have been going on for, I think, over eight months now. And so that, unfortunately, it's a little too late, given where we are in the process now, which is why we're providing an update. You know, it's sort of one of the things we, I don't know how clearly we talked about it, but you know, it was clear that we, we needed guidance to begin this process. And at some point, there's pencils down, and, and staff and the consultants get to work to, to bring the planning commission and the city council, which will amount to several thousand pages of analysis and documents upon which to make the policy decision upon.
So, so currently, we're at 572 units at the three, three-story level, and going up to five, it will allow us to get to 1,070?
Yes.
Okay. One question is about the, during, during the expansion of the, the campus and the expansion of services, will there be any, is there any discussion of limiting the amount of cafe space and personal services within the YouTube buildings that are private? And I guess I recall hearing one city decided that they, they didn't want to allow that anymore. I'm not sure if it was San Francisco.
So what you're talking about, so here in San Bruno, private cafes are allowed per our general plan, and the specific plan does not envision changing that. I think what you're referring to is there is significant talk yet, I don't believe, decision in the city of San Francisco of limiting the vast majority of, or just, they have a different scale of office workers than we have, and potentially limiting the amount of private cafes. What I would also say is Bay Hill at, at lunchtime is highly utilized by workers both at walmart.com, YouTube, but the, I think several dozen or so smaller businesses in the office park. And right now, that has not been specifically talked about in the specific plan as changing what is already allowed in the general plan, vis-à-vis private cafes.
Okay. And, but in the EIR, they will, you'll be looking at the, the economic impact of, of those services being allowed, not being allowed outside of the community that where normally, if it was, I don't know, like it was 10 years ago, you'd have these various companies in there, and they didn't have these cafes. So, so there was a more commerce occurring as these workers got into the community. Is, is that a part of the EIR?
EIR looks at environmental impact, not economic.
No economic.
And then, so that is not currently being looked at. I think the other factor there is with the buildout of 2.4 million square feet of, of office, or even the Phase One, the current capacity to serve the, the workers, I think, needs to be factored into that larger conversation. If, if there's a larger conversation about limiting private cafes, I think it's unto itself a significant analysis that factors in ability to serve as well.
Okay.
And I just wanted to say, Councilmember Medina, that issue did come up with the planning commission as well, when the Walmart Corp Cafe downstairs requested a liquor license. And we requested, or should I say, requested that the city look at the aggregate, see if there would be impacts on our local businesses, if these are going to be handed out to different businesses within the Bay Hill Center.
Okay. And I almost had a follow-up question, but I, I'll, I'll, I'm sure I'll remember it in a few minutes, and I'll let my colleagues take over for a little bit. Thank you.
Councilman Davis, do you have some questions?
Thank you. So first, I just kind of, some basic things I want to ask. A question is, just for the residents who are here, anybody who's listening, how is it that they're getting notified of, of future meetings, future information? And can our, does our city clerk have a list? Can anybody, does the city clerk have the cards where they can actually be added to an agenda, receive information?
So the notification for this meeting and other public meetings was the expanded or double the state require, and local requirement for notification of 300 feet. So it's 600 feet. It also includes all tenants, whereas the base state law is just property owners. We have a notification list, and it has over 100 people, and we're, we can, we can add names to that. If anyone probably emails the project planner, Matt Newbaum, or he maintains the master public notification list. So we will continue to provide that for all the public meetings.
Perfect. So outside the six center feet, they can be added to a list to be notified of all meetings. And then something that came up at the last development, oh, go ahead, Javon.
Can I just expound upon that? And admittedly, this is a shameless plug, but one of the things we recently started with is a city manager's e-monthly newsletter. And we are planning a article on the Bay Hill specific plan in that newsletter. Part of that is not just for this project, but important topics. We want to have a broader outreach and on a more regular basis to the citizenry. And so we will be talking about that, this project, through that process.
And I would encourage anybody who's not getting a copy of the city manager's newsletter to reach out to our city clerk to make sure you're added to the mailing list, because I think it's important to get those updates, and there's a lot of great information. The other thing that came up on the Mills Park development was that, you know, we spent many hours here discussing and repeating some of the same questions. So is there a way, and I know there's already a website, I know there's already a page, where we're keeping a lot of information, but I guess just simple questions and answers, and maybe links to that information. Sometimes it's difficult to navigate around to really find what you're looking for.
Totally. And what we'll do is we will add a FAQ, frequently asked questions, to the website for this project.
Great. And, and another housekeeping item, can I ask, also ask, as a notification goes out to the residents about the agendas, that there's a link to the page, or this, sort of the main page that that gets to. Just easier to click on something if they want to find more information?
Yes, it has it.
Perfect. Great. So those are some basic things. So good question by Councilmember Medina earlier, and I asked, one, I was interested in the same thing. You know, how many employees are currently working out of the Bay Hill complex today, whether it's YouTube, et cetera? And sort of what sort of numbers would we see in percentage increase would we see?
So we can return, we will return with all of that information. What I could say as far as the right now, that has already been published. So it's in various places. I think it's in our budget book, it's on our website. When we talk of our top 10 businesses in the city, what is reported there, that albeit may be a little dated, is 2,000 employees for YouTube and 2,000 employees for walmart.com as the two largest businesses in the office park, but not the only ones, that's 4,000.
Thank you. So with, with that said, you know, we, in a, there'll be more discussions as we go down this process regarding community, community benefits. I also would like to ask that the planning commission get a copy of the council presentation that was well presented by our finance director, Keith DiMartini, on the elimination of parking lieu fees and going, changing to a different plan. But as two, two former council members of the Park and Rec Commission, there's no way we're going to give up that added benefit that we, as, as council, as a city manager, Javon, has really elegantly explained with the two new parks, Florida coming and the Earl and Glenview. Those are really important fees that we'll retain from a development like this, that, that'll make huge impacts to our community. So with that, is there, there was also, and because, Javon, I don't know that you were around during the period of time when we did have a number of community meetings, and, and thank you to Commissioner Linda Mason for bringing this up as well. But there was a report that came out of all those community meetings that very clearly stated what the residents were looking for. So I would just ask that staff review that when we go back to negotiations regarding the community development, because that really is, my recollection might not be that great, but I do remember a lot of those comments as well. So I think that's an important piece. Some other great questions, and I also, also have concerns about landscaping. Those are beautiful, but it's just too much to maintain. I know that we struggle since with city staff are ready to, to maintain some of those, some of those beautiful city streets. So I think it would be careful with what the city's got to maintain versus what the owner needs to maintain. But those are all beautiful. Something that's come up, and I, and I remember having this discussion previously with David Waltering, our community development director, was something that San Francisco is very commonly known as, is the POPOs, the privately owned public open space, right? So you have like a rooftop facility that the public can go to between the hours of eight and five, or I don't know, five to seven, or whatever. So something to think outside the box, if, if YouTube is willing to offer a space that they could open up to the public. You know, part of me, as a resident in San Bruno for all my life, you know, I thought of the Bay Hill complex as sort of the space over there that nobody uses, utilizes. The great aerial photo of the Bay Hill complex, but you know, you really, you really kind of enjoy the perimeters of the space. You don't enjoy what's inside the space. So it'd be nice to be able to have something that we could be offered that with limited hours. But there's, there's the other piece that I appreciate Commissioner speaking about is security. And I understand that to be a very serious issue. So I get that. And if there's some sort of happy medium that we can make, and, and that is, you know, with the elevated employee lunch areas to be off the main level is an important piece, and I understand that as well. So before the EIR comes out, will there be another joint study session so that we can actually sort of hear it, listen to it, taste it, think about all those questions, and then go home and think about the questions we forgot to ask before a decision ever gets made? What is that process, and can we expect?
What's discussed in the staff report is that we would start with the planning commission and with the council in both groups, but not together anymore.
Okay.
We would do two study sessions so that we could introduce the specific plan and the EIR. It's going to be a lot of information.
Yes.
So we could break it up into two study sessions where you'd just be able to absorb it before you had to make, each group had to make a decision. So that's how we, that's the process we describe in the staff report as a way to use study sessions to introduce these documents, and then to move to a decision-making meeting. And yeah, we'll have, we have other groups, architectural review and things that we would also be doing. But just in terms of introducing the specific plan and the EIR, we would be doing that at a study session. And then we would do Phase One and associated documents at another study session.
Great, thank you.
So it wouldn't be, the goal would be to not completely overwhelm you, and to also give you time to think it over before you have to make a decision.
And I don't know if this is a question to ask now or later, but you know, with the impact of this development, whether it's housing, whether it's commercial space, you know, has there been discussion, and we touched on it briefly, is there been discussion about looking at ways to mitigate traffic congestion? I know we talked about El Camino, and we talked about different intersections, we talked about adding lights, you know, widening streets, adding additional lanes, and even going outside the box and thinking about adding additional freeway entrances and exits. I know off of San Bruno Avenue going north on 280, it's like one lane, it gets kind of congested. Is there, is there, is there any talk about that, or something that eliminates the backlog? Even today at 5:00, or in, in months, I live in the area, and while we travel in that area, it does get backed up. And I know that we're looking at improving San Bruno Avenue and Cherry, adding in that specific turning lane. So just something to think about in terms of impact on that.
I just wanted to
Yes.
respond to that, that yes, we are looking at those issues, and that will be part of the EIR, is kind of what, is what road improvements would be recommended. And it's, it's, that's a very complicated issue, so I'm not going to try and answer it.
Yes, I don't expect.
But you will get that information.
Exactly. And I, and I would say the other thing, I, I went back to my meeting, my notes from the last meeting in December, and there were a lot of comments on housing. And I, and I was happy to hear some additional comments by the public, as well as some members tonight, that we do need housing. I mean, we do, we are in a housing crisis, and it's important. And you know, you know, going forward into the future, whether it's a San Bruno or other developments, we have to provide something. We cannot continue as San Bruno and not, and limit the housing that we have available. We have to approach new development with, you know, all the, all the requirements that they need to go through, and, and that they're following the, the measure N, they're following the transit corridor plan, and they're following, you know, documentation. And we've got to expect developers to be capable to come into San Bruno and be able to follow the rule and be able to get approval on those things. So you know, if, I understand being against housing, and it's hard to understand for change, but I think it's really important. What's going to happen to our kids for tomorrow? There's not going to be a place to live. Why do we have so much congestion in San Bruno? Because people have to drive to get here. So if we can eliminate them driving to get here, and we can improve a shuttle in San Bruno, we can improve bicycle pedestrians in San Bruno, we can improve pathways in San Bruno, that people can use public transportation. Those are my comments.
Thank you. I wanted to start by expanding a little bit on, something's wrong with these guys. Right. I wanted to start by expanding a little bit on some comments that Councilmember Davis made. First of all, regarding the, the public notice. And I, I know that during the, the public meetings we had, they were, they were very well attended. And I'm not exactly sure what was done to advertise those, but they were very well attended, and the participation was really good. I attended a couple of those. And if, if there is anything additional that we can do, and then this is a very large project, and I could see this impacting a large portion of the city, and in some other projects that have been discussed recently, I know one of the criticisms was that there wasn't enough notification to the, the city at large. So I know that we do have a circle that, you know, that we, that we have to address. We've expanded that. That if there's anything else that we can do on social media, including your very well organized newsletter that you're putting out, anything else that we can do to get the word out. And specifically, I'm concerned about that because a lot of the discussion I heard in those, in those workshops, it really focused on the, the public aspect of the project. And I see a lot of those points really diminished in this plan. And I know that what the community sort of envisioned, and the community was given a very broad, you know, scope to play with. And they said, you know, best case scenario, what do you guys want to see? And the community did come back with a lot of open space, with a lot of accessible space, but it doesn't necessarily jibe with the business needs of the people that are going to actually pay for this. So I, I get that. But as this plan evolves, as it matures, I want to make sure that the community is aware that what they initially envisioned may not be what's, what's happening. I also don't remember hearing anything about housing being discussed in those. So that's, when I first heard it in, in our discussions here, I was a little put off by that. I don't, you know, because I hadn't heard it before, because it's never been part of, of this area. It seemed very foreign. But as one of our speakers so eloquently put, we do have a responsibility to help offset some of the problems that we create. I think regionally, we've allowed, you know, the entire state has allowed this mess to be created in the interest of generating jobs. We've actually generated a bunch of jobs, but not necessarily jobs that fit within the communities where they're, they're being, they're being placed. So this project is a very responsible project in that we're, we're creating the, the positions, we're, we're creating a place for people to work, and including that housing seems to make sense within that, within that construct. So I am generally supportive of that idea. But along those lines, I'm wondering, as we evaluate the impact of both the, the office space and housing, are we making any broad assumptions about what the interaction is between those two? And basically, what I'm asking is, are we assuming worst-case scenario for residential on top of worst-case scenario for, for the office uses? Or are we assuming that somehow that there's some synergy that takes place that alleviates that?
So the preferred alternative?
Sure. So the preferred alternative looks at a, essentially a maximum envelope, which is the 2.46 million square feet of office and the housing overlay on parcels that affront San Bruno Ave and Cherry Avenue. And so in many ways, we are considering that maximum footprint along areas where it seemed to be appropriate, those major corridors of the office park. And I would also say, although it's not included in the specific plan area, it's also allowed in the transit corridors plan area, El Camino Real and San Bruno Ave. And so really looking at where housing could work best at a maximum level, and I believe the numbers in the PowerPoint were a little over 500 at the existing 1284, and at the increased heights, a little over 1,000.
Okay.
Housing units.
So, so we could assume that there, that we're, we're basically planning for the worst, or the most impactful situation? Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. We're analyzing for the most impactful situation, and identifying mitigation measures for that.
Perfect. And another question or criticism that I heard come up prior was whether or not the transit corridor plan took into account what's happening at Bay Hill. And so then I would ask, does the Bay Hill plan take into account what's happening on the transit corridor side, and is that an additive sort of impact considered there?
Yes, it does. So that's considered the cumulative analysis, and it does take into consideration the transit corridor plan and any other pipeline projects that have submitted applications. What it doesn't take into account is hypotheticals such as Tanfran, right, which we've been talking about for years, but nothing's been submitted. We don't have any plans, but all existing plans, all existing pipeline projects are being included in the cumulative analysis.
Okay. And as we evaluate the traffic, I'm wondering, because El Camino is a state highway, do we take into consideration any limits that we have on controlling what the state says we can and can't do with their traffic lights?
So we take that into consideration, but we do work with Caltrans. And generally, when you're talking about the things that I mentioned in the presentation, such as adjusting signal timing, they generally work with the jurisdictions to accomplish that. They have obviously limitations around major infrastructure improvements, and those just go through a separate process if they are, if they are ever proposed, but they certainly work with jurisdictions for adjustments such as signal timing.
And so when we get the, the results of the EIR, will we have, will we have some indication of whether what we're proposing is doable within the state's guidelines?
Correct. Well, the Caltrans will be routed a copy of the draft EIR to review, and we will obviously consult with them. I anticipate they will provide a comment letter that's pretty typical.
Perfect.
And then, like I said, with the response, with the evaluation of those comments, we would provide responses to them.
Okay, all right. And actually, I have one more. Oh, this is a broader question, and probably not something that really falls within the EIR, but I am concerned when we start talking about, you know, YouTube's use of their buses, and I'm wondering on a broader context, what impact that has on the public transportation infrastructure in general. So, and what I'm getting at is, I'm wondering if having these private solutions, which work well for, for this circumstance, do they have a negative impact on Caltrain ridership, or Samtrans ridership, where we might be able to have better overall results, rather than only looking at our own project and working with YouTube to do what they can do with their buses, if we start thinking broader about what do we do to make their solution part of the regional solution? I know Caltrain is planning for this huge expansion in ridership, but actually, the numbers are trending down. So I'm not exactly sure what's driving that right now, but if there's anything that we can consider within our, and maybe that's not part of this conversation, but possibly, if it could be, maybe it is something that we could raise with them.
Sure. I would say that those conversations have been had at a very cursory level because they're larger and broader than the specific plan and regional connections. What I would say, in getting workers to use transit in the Bay Area, the largest problem, once you look outside of the limitations of the individual transit systems to add additional capacity, are first and last mile connections, right? That first mile, getting people from their house on the transit, and then that last mile, getting people from the transit stop to their place of employment. One of the things, and Darcy touched on that a little bit, because we, in the Bay Hill Office Park, have two very large employers, Walmart.com and YouTube, that have very robust TDM plans, they have programs at work to solve those both first and last mile problems for their employees. I think the larger connection of, is there a way for major employers in the Bay Area to help support more additional transit ridership? It's certainly a, a conversation that has already started at the regional transportation boards. And it's something that I think companies are interested in, the regional transportation industries are interested in. And it is no insignificant cost, what these TDM plans cost, to virtually operate what sort of amounts to a private transportation company for your individual employees. And so as those conversations happen at a higher level, I just think intrinsically their interest in, in having those conversations on everyone's side, because the costs are so high and the benefit to the larger Bay Area is so great.
Okay, all right. And would there be a possibility that we could, say, make that sort of a solution, a preferred solution for us, that we would prefer for them to focus on that last mile, first mile, versus something different?
I think we can have those conversations. My initial gut response is, these are evolutionary conversations that involve many, many agencies, and through our planning process, we want to have requirements that we know will work to reduce traffic in San Bruno, even if those larger conversations don't happen. And so I totally hear what, hear what you're saying, and I think we can further those conversations. But through the EIR impacts and TDM mitigations, I think we want to make sure that should those things not happen, that we are fully capturing the traffic impacts and mitigations that are appropriate for the 2.4 office.
Very good. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Councilman Medina, did you think of the questions you had?
I just had one additional comment, and so you talk about the first mile and the last mile, but what about once the employee arrives to work, how do we get them to spend money in San Bruno? So we need to think about a shuttle.
Thank you. Back to the Planning Commission. I believe somebody else had more questions?
Thank you. Do you have one question for staff? Given that, the presentation for development this evening, and there are a lot of moving parts, goodness sakes, a lot of moving parts here with Caltrans and all kinds of moving parts. The question that comes to my mind is, how could, how could someone, developer, private owner, come in and choose to come in here recognizing potentially that they may not, they may not get approved? It's a huge concern for me, and I know that it's a, it's a fresh situation, and I don't, maybe this isn't the appropriate source to answer it, but if you look, I need to ask the question, we've sent basically a message out, you meet all the criteria, everything's taken, everything, every T was crossed, every dot was there, years of working on this project, it's gone through, measure end went through, 68%. I mean, there wasn't anything else that could have been done that was different. So why would we be attracted to somebody else? And why would someone take the risk and put that type of commitment, investment of dollars, and then be potentially turned down? I mean, we have now set a, you know, basically, it's out there. So I just wanted to be able to kind of, it's a study session, right?
It's a, it's a
I don't know who the question is for, so I'm
No, I understand, and it's a very broad and big question that we each will have to wrestle with. I don't think it's particularly appropriate for this particular venue, though.
Fair enough.
Unless the city manager wants to add something.
No.
No.
I, I will, I don't want to veer off course from our agenda items, so let me talk specifically about this project.
Excuse me. The part, the reason I brought it up is because we did talk about height limits here, and that was really the reason why I was bringing it up.
Sure, absolutely. So the height is being studied as in the preferred alternative, but again, no plans have been identified to put that question before voters. We are essentially making sure that this process is robust enough, so it doesn't have to be redone, should that ever happen. I think to your other question, I think it's a very valid point, that we go through these very, I mean, this is already a three-year process, and by the time we're done, we're approaching a four-year process with a outlay of $2 million from the project sponsor just to cover city fees and consultant costs. And that doesn't include all of the costs that are being outlaid on their architectural renderings and other things on their side. So it is quite a significant investment when private parties come to a city and want to pursue development. And so that is why frankly, we go through these very in-depth, advanced planning processes, so we can be very clear when we communicate out to the development community. We have had a robust community engagement process, we have taken it through our approval bodies, and we are formally saying to the development community that this is how we want you to invest in our community. And then we need to forthrightly process those applications. At the end of the day, the council has the ultimate decision, and there are always ramifications from each decision. And as staff, we work with whatever those decisions are, and protect taxpayer dollars as much as we can. What I would also say, specific to this project, because I do think that this is a, a unique undertaking that we're talking about today, or that we're involved in, because we do not have a spec builder come into the city saying, hey, I would like to do a, I would like to increase the amount of office capacity that could be developed. What we have is a, a company that has already headquartered in San Bruno, Bruno, that wants to build out their campus headquarters, that is totally different than approving a specific plan on spec from a developer who doesn't know who their eventual tenant is going to be. And so I do think that that brings about slightly a different take throughout this process. But again, it is important that we forthrightly proceed, and frankly, through this process, decide what we think is right for San Bruno over the next 15 to 20 years on this site, and then work with private entities to develop those projects. A large part of the development impact fees and benefits that we're talking about are not immediate. They come over time as the project develops. And so, you know, that it's there, and part of the certainty that we are, would be providing through this project is a development agreement for multiple phases for YouTube. And so that is talked about as a part of this project as well. But, and that's hand in hand with the specific plan process, to have a development agreement that will provide a surety to the property owner.
Just a question for clarification, Mr. Kergan. When you talked about a developer coming in, but wasn't it a property owner of San Bruno? I mean, it was a property owner who hired a developer. It was still an owner of the land?
Are there any other?
Yeah, through the chair. I'm going to respectfully push back just a little bit on some of the comments that were made on the, in Lufy's. I just, I want to make sure that we're setting realistic expectations. The, when I asked the city for some records on how much had been collected in Park and Lufy's in the past couple of years, it was very, very, very little, close to zero, actually. And so while I appreciate impact fees, what I don't understand is why every city around us has been charging impact fees for years, and we just started charging them on May 1st of this year. So I just want to be clear that that's part of the frustration when we're investing and looking at development coming to our city, is, you know, if we were looking for a development coming after measure end passed, why didn't we start charging the fees sooner? So because we haven't been charging the fees, and we don't, I don't want to get into a discussion, we don't need to, I mean, unless you want to respond to that, I just want to comment that that's where a lot of the frustration is coming from
Absolutely.
With the, the fees, the lack of money that's coming in. I want to just point to page five of nine, where under the open space, it says, "The open space would be located on private land, but would be publicly accessible and of sufficient dimension for workers and community members to enjoy." So between that and the public meetings, where many of the members of the public wanted a park or some kind of a space in the, in this vicinity, I just want to, I'm hearing that that is more than likely not going to happen, maybe not onsite, but maybe somewhere else. What is a realistic expectation at the onset of the planning that the public can expect?
Two questions there. Let me frankly back up to the first question, but stay on point. The development impact fees that would apply to this project total at what is being studied in the EIR at 2.46 million square feet of office, that totals just about $45 million in development impact fees that would go to offset infrastructure cost in the city over the, the build-out cycle. I think, talking about other fees that did apply or didn't apply, I think one of the things that is important to recognize is that there were, prior to the development impact fee, the open space in Lufy applied to condominium projects. And so it did not apply to, for example, the Aperture project, because that is apartments. And so the city has appropriately applied that to projects when it applied, which is why we removed that and provided a comprehensive development impact fee program that covers both condominiums and apartments and office and other commercial uses. And so I think that's important to note, and the historical lack of collection of those fees has a lot to do with the amount of development that happened over the last 10 to 15 years. The other question about the public realm is, slide 27 is up on the board, and that shows those greenways, publicly open private space and connections, and pedestrian connections to Commodore Park and other things. So this is a part of the, this is a part of the specific plan that is being talked about. It is also being talked about through, or at least your, I'm sorry, your open space question is being talked about through the community benefits conversation. And a lot of things were talked about, and direction given from the city council, one of them being Commodore Park and other investments in, in open space. But all of those are active negotiations that are going on. So the, your question of when can the public expect that? The public can expect, should everything stay on schedule? The development agreement and all of those informations to be provided to the Planning Commission prior to the city council in December of 2018.
2019.
December of 2019.
Thank you. So the, the impact fees, then, just because you mentioned the Aperture building, who could have, who could have changed what those impact fees are applied to?
Yeah, so
Who could change that now?
So I, that is not a noticed item to talk about another project and the fees on another project. This meeting was specifically noticed to talk about items related either directly or tangibly related to the Bay Hill specific plan project. I've been getting head nods from the city attorney, so we need to stay on point.
Okay. So I have a question about daycare. Is YouTube considering an onsite daycare for its employees?
So we have had So we have had conversations with the applicant about that, and that is not, to my knowledge, not being considered at this time. However, we are including within the specific plan, having daycare as an allowed use. Again, right now, someone wanted to open a daycare anywhere in this area. It is a discretionary process that I think has to go before the Planning Commission, and then maybe even the city council, just the Planning Commission. And it takes months, and that's part of the challenge with opening daycares that I think we've heard loud and clear. And so through this process, we are making it an allowed use where that can happen in a more expedited fashion, yeah, by building permit. So you have, you get to skip the planning stage and go straight to the building process for your building permit.
This question is for Ms. Costello, because I saw that you were, I guess, they mentioned you were a planner in Mountain View where Google has its headquarters.
Right.
So is the, is one development agreement for all five phases over a 20-year period standard?
You know, development agreements are one of those things that is negotiated individually on every single project, and every project I've worked on has had a different approach to a development agreement. There's really no standard that I can point to and say, this is what's always done on development agreements.
Can you maybe give us some benefits and some negatives to this, one development agreement for a 20-year build-out?
You know, I'm actually not working on the city's development agreement, so I think I should turn that over to...
I'll take that. So the question was, are there benefits and negatives of one development agreement? Sure, there's always pluses and minuses of everything. What I would say is it all depends on how the agreement is structured and what the benefits that are conveyed to the developer and the city. And so we will bring a proposed development agreement to the Planning Commission for then recommendation and ultimate decision to the city council on that. And for any agreement, it takes two willing parties, and so both parties have to decide based on the terms of the agreement that it is of significant benefit to them to enter into that agreement. And so specific to us, I think that process will unfold beginning in December.
Okay. If possible, can we get the development, just because I'm sure it's going to be really long, can we get it a little bit more than our normal Friday before the meeting, if possible?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there any low-income housing requirement on any of these properties?
So specific to this project, with the housing overlay, whether it's at the 500 or the 1,000 unit with an increase, with a height increase, the city does have a affordable housing requirement of 15%. In addition, the, any housing project that provides it onsite has to either pay an in-lufy or provide 15% onsite for any commercial development. There is a commercial linkage fee of, again, $12.50 per square foot that will be indexed and go up over time. And right now, at the EIR amount at $2.46 million, that is roughly $30 million of affordable housing impact fees, 24 million of which, based on current property ownership, would be paid by YouTube.
So I don't mean to be facetious, but is that no? Because affordable housing is much higher than the low-income housing requirement. The low-income housing can be as little as zero income, depending on what brackets you're working with, so...
Affordable is... So... Are you speaking of income level, or...
So there's affordable housing, and then within the umbrella of affordable housing, there's low-income units, and this was a...
Yes, there's low, there's affordable, very low, low...
Right, and so not all developers have low-income housing. They make affordable housing.
Right, so, let me take that. Our affordable housing 15% requirement has requirements at the very low level, the low and the moderate level. So the answer to your question is yes, if they're built onsite. If it is payment of the $30 million over time, that will, that will be money that goes directly to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund and can be invested as projects come along, as projects are developed at various income levels. And so the answer to that question is yes as well. It will likely go to all income levels.
That's really good to hear. And then my other question is in regards to the campus. It's a really large, it appears, at least from the aerial view, to be a very large development. Is there any concern on the city that, let's say that the tech boom busts? What would we do with this large, I know that this is a big conversation happening with malls across America right now as they're closing, so what would we do with a large campus?
Absolutely. That is a very insightful question, and we have had a number of conversations about that very topic because why we are here with one developer that has agreed to undertake this process and pay for it. We know in the history, properties transition and property ownership's transition, and that actually was one of the reasons why we picked Elaine Costello because of her significant history working in the Silicon Valley at various cities. And so I'll now turn it over to Elaine because we've had so many conversations on that, and oftentimes, we go to school.
Yes, I would say that one of the experiences I did have in Mountain View was a lot of campuses, for example, the Google Plex was originally constructed for Silicon Graphics, and then Silicon Graphics went, had business difficulties, and anyway, I won't go through the whole story. But we have been approaching this project all along as how do we make it work for YouTube, but also how do we make it work for other potential users in the future? We just never lose sight of the idea that YouTube may not be the eventual developer. Not that we want to accommodate their needs, but we also want to make sure that it will work because that has really been the experience of, really, a lot of these campuses over time is that they build up part of it, or they, or they, you know, they don't, sometimes they follow all the way through, but a lot of times there are changes. And so we have really focused on making sure that we're always thinking about that as we develop the specific plan.
Right, thank you. And then just, just two more questions. And I talked to Jevon about this a little bit, but the, as we build out and as we look at housing, a lot of cities are adopting ordinances that include building parking upstairs as opposed to underground with the idea that housing of the future is going to have less cars, and these parking structures can, the way they're built, are easily converted into apartments. Is there, if in fact, in 20 years, less people are driving? So just looking towards the future, is San Bruno considering any of these options or looking into what some of these other cities like Burbank are doing?
Are we considering that? That's sort of a two-part question. The real answer is no, not right now, because what you're asking really aligns to housing. And in this area right now, and frankly, in most of San Bruno, we have ordinance 1284 that limits housing to three stories with underground parking. And with the high cost of going underground, it's somewhere upwards to 60 to $120,000 of space, that is a limiting factor. And it also does not allow for what you're saying, which is there are a number of residential projects that are talking about having above-ground parking and making sure that that above-ground parking deck is large enough so if some of the projections that in 20 years, people are frankly, taking more Ubers and not having as many private cars, you can enclose that parking deck and reuse that space. So the answer is really, in a hard sense, no, we are not considering that because we are under the guise of ordinance 1284. Part of the answer is yes, we are also considering that possibility because, as council directed, we are including the possibility of additional height that would potentially allow for something like that, that would again, have to be taken to the voters. And so that is one of the, although it wasn't talked about, that is one of the ramifications of having a more robust EIR where you can include additional height for potentially strategies like that that may come on later, later as time comes on. But again, adopted by voters.
Okay. So, and then the, I think everyone's talked about the need for housing, and yesterday, I want to say it was yesterday that Reader's Digest came out with the 15 most expensive cities in the US, and San Bruno was number 13. With that said, there's a New York Times article last month that Google pledged to invest $1 billion to ease the Bay Area housing crisis, and I understand that 250,000 of that is going into, I guess, a combined trust. Is there any commitment to San Bruno where YouTube will be headquartered?
Bit of a clarification, Google announced a $1 billion investment in housing, and it was 250 million that there is an investment fund for affordable housing. The city does have that application, and we have staff that are working on how we would submit an application to that fund. I think there are two important points, one, or maybe three. One, the fund is for, really intended for, as we understand it, shovel-ready projects. And so we do not have a shovel-ready project, so it's going to take some time to develop a shovel-ready application. In addition, it, my understanding is that that is not a, while it is open to the city of San Bruno to apply for, it is not a YouTube fund, it is a larger Google fund that we are open to apply for, so...
Are there any other questions from the Planning Commissioners?
This is a very exciting project, so, thank you.
I'm sorry?
No, I just said this is a very exciting project. Thank you.
Okay. Last call for council questions? Hello? No? Okay. Thank you. I would like to thank staff very much, the Planning Commission, for your insightful questions and the council. I'd just like to remind people, because people get nervous when they hear housing, housing, housing. The housing piece that we're talking about is part of the EIR, the Environmental Impact Report. It is part of the study that lets us know what the impact of having housing would be if we, if you, the voters, decided to add that and to allow for higher density, higher height and higher density in that area. It does not mean anybody's going to build housing within the next year, or two years, or even 20 years, we don't know. But it allows us to know what the possible impacts would be so we can make some intelligent decisions and discussions about it. So that's part of it. I'd like to talk about, a little bit about the open space. I also remember the conversations that the public had about open space and the expectations, but the conversation continued on there, and people were saying, well, I don't really want to bring my child to a park in the middle of a business, business park. It's really kind of an awkward thing to do. So the consensus was at the time that it would be better to have a linear green space and have a connectivity between El Camino and up through Cherry and up through Bay Hill, and that would be something that people in the community would actually use and enjoy. So that was one of the reasons that it kind of evolved from what had originally been talked about. The comment about using the public-private open space is something I think we should ask them to look at. I know in San Francisco, the hours are very restricted and they're kind of awkward, but maybe we can work on it since, and look at a different way to accommodate people. I also appreciate the storm drain comments. It's one of my bugaboo's. It is a huge undertaking that the city is going to have to have throughout all the areas, not just Bay Hill, that we're going to have to figure out how to capture more storm drain waters and runoff, and also how to keep the litter out of the storm drains. So I'm glad to hear that that's happening. And with that, there's no other comments or questions? I call this meeting adjourned? Oh, I'm sorry, there's one other comment. On some of the agendas that inadvertently got published, that there would be an August 13th, thank you, meeting. It is, that is not correct. That meeting was canceled for vacation time. So the next scheduled council meeting is August 27.
27.
27, thank you very much. So with that, I call this meeting adjourned.